Counselor Page, and the last I heard, I didn't check, is the elevator still out of service? Anybody? Elevator? Anybody use the elevator in this building?
It's not in service.
It's not in service, thank you. So it's still not in service. At this point, I'll ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Counselor Levy.
Present.
Counselor De La Cruz. Absent. Counselor Payano? Absent. Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes. Absent. Counselor Rodriguez. Absent. Counselor De Rosario?
Present.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Present.
Counselor Infante?
Present.
President LaPlante?
Present. Will you please join me in rise for a moment of silence?
Thank you, councilors, and welcome back. I'm looking for approval of the June, I'm sorry, the July nineteenth meeting notice. Is there a meeting?
Some move.
Seconding.
By Counselor De Rosario, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The ayes have it. At this point, we are going to do the public participation. As a reminder, you have two and a half minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the buzzer or the bell goes off. At that point, we ask you to wrap up your comments. Please address the chair, and not any members of the council in particular. The first person this evening is Lawrence Hester.
My name is Lawrence Hester, resident, taxpayer, citizen of Lawrence for sixty-something odd years. I'm here before you by choice and necessity to talk about the streets and hazards on Abbott Street. And I, I reach out to all of the councils at large, like a fellow councillor in District F did. I asked them to walk from Osgood to Phillips Street and look at the bad sidewalks, okay? Now, the excuse we got was that we need ADA handicap access with curb cuts. I'm very familiar with ADA regulations 521 and ADA handicap access curb cuts. Now, that was the priority. Now, they did from Shawshene Road all the way to Osgood Street. Last year, they said from Osgood past Phillips, Abbott Street was going to be taken care of. Didn't happen, okay? What good is an ADA handicap access curb cut and you have hazards on the sidewalk, especially in front of my house? I, I reach out to you like a fellow councillor did, who shouldn't have had to do that, who's written emails to the public. I get the excuse that, oh, the funds went up. Shame on you. That should have been foreseen. You should have figured it in. My taxes went up. I'm here. My mortgage went up. My insurance went up. What would you do if I didn't pay my bills or figure? I'm out of retirement. I had to come out of retirement from the city of Lawrence after thirty-six point seven years to keep up with bills inflation. And I say to you, walk up that street, and you tell me afterwards why they can't repair Abbott Street sidewalks, the hazards. We have things from the gas company that were there. I'll wrap it up. Look, especially where my stairs come down, there's a hazard, a trip hazard, and I rested at that. I'm not going to rest here. I'm going to trace the money. I'm going to find out. I'm going to go to other state agencies and say, why was this money spent? Where is it? We need an investigation, if necessary. So I pray to you, especially the councils at large, go, walk from Osgood Street, go to Shawshene, get a little exercise. We all need it, even me.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Thank you very much.
Clerk, will you please read the roll for Counselor Payano?
Counselor Payano?
Present.
The next speaker is Mr. Mali.
Huma Yumali, fifty-three Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. In this important election year, our city facing an important emergency. Our poor Lawrence Public School cafeteria worker on strike, suffering. Lawrence Public School with a budget of two-hundred-and-thirty million dollars. We demand the best contract for Lawrence Public School cafeteria workers now. We demand from you and Honorable Mayor Brian De Pena, contract for Lawrence Police now. Lawrence Police with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Roy Vas has done excellent job to protect our citizens. We demand Lawrence Police best contract. We are grateful to honorable members of this city council for passing a great resolution to declare September thirteenth the day of the first responder appreciation. All the citizens of the Lawrence proud of your act. We demand contract for Lawrence Police now. Million thanks to our DPW workers. Lawrence is a beautiful city for, for the hard work, sweat and blood of our DPW workers. Lawrence Public School with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Cynthia Paris, one of the best superintendent in the history of Lawrence moving forward. We are thankful from Honorable Superintendent Cynthia Paris and Lawrence Alliance for Education for granting contract to our teacher. Please help our cafeteria workers with granting the best contract and compensation. Remember your campaign promise. Prosper Lawrence. Save Lawrence. Only possible if we have the contract for Lawrence Police now. Lawrence one city under God with the best example, respect for union right. We rise up in unity in support of Lawrence Public School cafeteria workers. We feel your pain. We feel your suffering. We will not stop until you have the best contract. You remember in this election year, best contract for Lawrence Police officers. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lee Fickenworth.
Lee Fickenworth, thirty-four Cross Street. I'm here to talk about Chico's Summer Shootout. One, only one of you showed up for Friday. I know this Friday, it's going to be raining, so I'll forgive, forgive each and every one of you that doesn't show up Friday. I'll be there. It's a very important event. If it was a state rep that's going to be having one over at the same park, you all will, all your faces will be there. But what about these people that have these kids that have been playing ball since the beginning of July? It's very important for all of you to show your face. We'll be sitting in the back on, every Friday this month, in the back, where the DJ is and where the school board is. Don't disappoint us. These kids need to see faces. We, I seen one person, I won't tell you who it is, but only one councillor that came. I don't see why any of you aren't showing up. It's a shame. Because if it was some, like I said, if it was a state rep who's having it, is it this Saturday? Not that I'm throwing him a plug, but if it's not this Saturday, it's next Saturday. Everybody's going to be there. I know it. Because I was there two years ago. So that's all I have to say. Saturday, Friday night, six p.m., O'Neil Park, right next to the library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jeffrey Petula. As a reminder, we have two and a half minutes. You get a bell at the two-minute mark. Go ahead, sir.
The last time we were here, we're here to get rid of a tabled item. But tonight, I don't want to talk about that. Four years ago, we were here, we touched upon a subject that's kind of touchy. It's called conflict of interest, but not, not clearly enough. What we mean by a conflict of interest is when you're voting on an agenda item, and examples would be that you have a relative, such as an aunt, an uncle, a friend or a relative, a father, a mother, cousin, that has a property, such as A&amp;M Auto Body, with a fifty-by-one-hundred-foot lot, his own residential R2, R3, and it is, and you're seeking to transfer the zoning from residential to business, commercial, industrial, so as to benefit in such a way from your vote that goes something like this. You gave it to A&amp;M Auto Body, now you got to give it to me. This is commonly known as opening Pandora's box, which is turning the city into chaos. And if you knew that you had a conflict of interest, that means you lied to yourself and to other council members and to the public, which means you are complicit with the lie and also betting your fellow councillors know about the lie, and you're making them complicit with the lie as well. So we are asking and advising if there is anyone on the city council that would benefit by getting your vote, or by you giving your vote to them, monetarily or otherwise, we're asking that you remove yourself from the voting. If you don't, not only are you doing a disservice to the public, you represent, you're committing the mortal sin of all by being complicit with the lie and involving your other city councillors with being complicit with the lie. Done.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alta Gracia Garcia. Vivo en Loren por veintisiete años. Este, yo quiero que la enmienda de, de la porción justa es una buena, es buena para la ciudad de Loren, porque, porque va a traer mucha oportunidad para las inversiones y para, para invertir en la escuela pública y nuestra infraestructura. Ustedes todos deberían de votar sí en esa boleta para esta resolución, para el pueblo sepa de su, de esto. Es todo. Que pasen buenas noches.
Can you say it in English? Oh, okay. So I'll translate for her. This is Alta Gracia Garcia. She is a resident of the city of Lawrence. She's here advocating today in favor of the resolution in support of the fair share amendment. She believes that the, that if passed, the fair share amendment would bring a lot of really important opportunities for investment in our public schools and in our city's infrastructure, and she urges all of you today to vote yes on the resolution in support of the fair share amendment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Clerk, will you please read the roll for Counselor Rodriguez?
Counselor Rodriguez?
Present.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joshua Alba, school committee member.
Good evening, councilors. Josh Alba, three hundred Methuen Street. I'm coming to you today as the Merrimack Valley Regional Organizing Director for the Fair Share Campaign, to tell, to encourage you and to help answer some questions here, along with my colleague, Henry, about the fair share amendment. In Massachusetts, right now, we have a regressive tax system where poor folks, poor and working-class folks, black and brown folks, specifically all across Massachusetts, pay a higher percentage rate than the wealthy one percent of Massachusetts. That being, we pay ten percent of our taxes to state and local taxes, while the wealthy one percent pay only six point eight percent. Passing the fair share, or your resolu, your passing of the resolution of the fair share will give a signal to Lawrence voters that we care about the tax system. We care about investments in, in transportation infrastructure and our public education. As we already know, our education system is in desperate need of, of funds. Y'all went through the situation with the Oliver Partnership School and rebuilding that and looking for funds to build that. With this taxation, if it wins in November, vote yes on one, everybody. It's question number one. If we win in November, it'll raise over one point five billion dollars that will go to municipalities and towns for us to decide where that money will go within our school systems and our bridges and our tunnels and our roads. So I'll be here for when the item comes up for any other questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The public participation is now, you know, my apologies. Dick Russell?
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell. I reside thirty-four Cross Street. Believe it or not, nothing really to complain about tonight. Several compliments to hand out, and a question about government process. It's good that the mayor's office is now publicizing public events for the public to enjoy, or in my case, take photos of, something that somehow disappeared during the previous mayor's term of office. A week and a half ago, we celebrated the seventieth anniversary of the Puerto Rican Constitution with a ceremony and a flag raising, which I took numerous photos of. Last night, we celebrated national night out at the boathouse with all sorts of city officials and equipment on display. The highlight for me was getting a boat ride up the river in the Lawrence Police Department boat with Mayor De Pena piloting it. Now, lesson in government, the city council has nine elected officials, and five elected officials in one location constitutes a quorum. Is this photo a violation of the public meeting law, the quorum, five? I'm just asking. There's a lot of friends that are not here that would like to, they're curious about that answer. I apologize for the photo for not being up to the quality of my standards. The ink in my printer must have evaporated due to the heat over the past several weeks. Again, as always, I thank you for the thing. I get ink. I will give you autographed copies if you want.
Thank you very much. Now, the public participation is concluded. I'm going to give the clerk the sheet with the names and addresses and the issue areas to put in our records. Councilors, thank you so much. I, I'd like to take a document under Table Matters under, so we can just let the individual go home. This is a hire of a new city attorney. Document one fifty dash twenty-two. Is there a motion to take document one fifty dash twenty-two off of Table Matters?
Some move.
Motion made by Counselor Stefan, Counselor Infante, seconded by Counselor Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The ayes have it. Counselors, we had a, a conflict with one of our finalists who was not able to be here this evening. As you recall, we sent letters out, but he wasn't able to be here. One of our other finalists is here this evening, and he understands the dynamics of, of having both finalists here at the same time. I, I would like just to, to free that finalist for not being here for a set of questions, and then allow that individual to go home. We're not going to go through this evening. So what I'm looking to do, and I know that, that that individual also has a conflict in a couple of weeks. So the, the purpose is, is perhaps having the, the actual interviews of the finalists of our first meeting in September. So I would like to look for a motion to table this matter again and, and invite both finalists to our first meeting in September.
Some move.
Motion made by Counselor Payano, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion. Henry, none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The ayes have it. I'm, I'm also looking for a motion to reconsider a tabled, no, a, a minutes from our September, I'm sorry, our July fifth meeting. I'm looking for a motion for someone who was present at that meeting who voted. There's a councillor who really wishes to vote in favor of it for the minutes for July fifth. So I'm looking for a motion to reconsider on the prevailing side for, for the July fifth meeting. Is there a motion to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider.
Motion made by Counselor Infante.
Seconding.
Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. I'm now looking for a motion to approve the July fifth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion made by Counselor Infante, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. I'm sorry. Discussion, discussion, Counselor Rodriguez. Please let the record reflect that it was seconded by Counselor Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Public hearings. Document two thirty-two twenty-two. Clerk, please read the public hearing notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August second, twenty twenty-two, at seven p.m. At a public meeting of the Lawrence City Council in the City Council chambers, two hundred Common Street, Lawrence, Mass, pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-two. This meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person and in the City Council chamber and remotely via Zoom. Please note that the elevator at City Hall will not be in service. To receive the acts, to receive access codes for remote participation, contact the city clerk at nine seven eight six two zero three two three three prior to the meeting. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lawrence that the revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence are hereby further amended by adding the following new section, two point seven two point zero seven zero of the municipal code, Program Director Public Health. A, position established. There is established the position of Program Director dash Public Health to be appointed by the mayor. B, responsibilities. The Program Director shall be located within the Inspection Services Department and shall work under the general direction of the Commissioner of Inspection Services, acting either in the Commissioner's official capacity or in the capacity as Director of the Local Board of Health, appointed under MGL C one one one, section thirty. The Program Director shall be responsible for management of grants and special programs, including but not limited to initiatives created through partnerships and funding opportunities offered by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the U.S. Department of Public Health, and Human Services, AmeriCorps, or other government, nonprofit, private, or independent agency. Qualifications. The Program Director shall possess a master's degree in public health or social science, or bachelor's degree with experience of three to five years in a relevant field, including general public health, education, national community service, research, data collection and analysis, healthy homes and housing, food safety, communicable disease, and clinical healthy evaluation, supervision and performance assessment of personnel, program coordination, team leadership, or grant management, or other qualifications allowable by grant agreement. D, salary and term. The salary and benefits of the Program Director shall be compensated at a salary allowable by the funding agency and set by the terms of the grant agreement, which provides said funding. This position is co-terminous with the grant funding. To the extent that there exists any ordinance to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Done. The public hearing is now closed. Counselors?
Counselor.
Counselor Payano, your motion?
Oh, making a motion.
Is there a motion? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, Counselor Plant, if I could interrupt. Mike Amano, Director of Inspection Services, I, I just respectfully would like to ask on if there is a motion that's going to be favorable, that we could waive thirty days on this.
Thank you. Right now, we're looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve and waive the thirty days.
Seconding.
Motion's been made by Counselor Infante, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion.
Discussion.
Counselor Payano?
Thank you. So I want to make sure I give an opportunity for the administration to speak about the motion, and I, I have some questions myself.
I'm sorry, Counselor. Could you repeat that again?
Yes, I just want to give an opportunity for the administration to explain their proposal, and then afterwards, I'll, I have some questions myself.
Very good. Mr. Spanner, welcome.
Yes. Good evening, Octavian Spanner. Senior Advisor to Mayor De Pena, two hundred Common Street. We just wanted to verify with the clerk if the, because we have something different, I think we may have heard. So they're trying to read the, the job description.
Counselor President, if, if, if you would like, I can read what, I think what we're voting on?
No, just, just for the correction, to see if the clerk has it correctly.
So, so thank you. So the, the clerk read the public hearing notice, and just to double check, that is the, the initial, or the, whatever the, the proposal was, had certain language in it, and we're just now looking to make sure that, 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 that language is in there. And I am, I am not, I am not, I am not seeing that the, the, there's more language in this draft that you sent than what was read by the city clerk.
Yes. I believe and Director Amano is telling me that during the meeting of the subcommittee, there were changes.
Yes, I, I believe a, a slightly different version, just one small piece, was changed right before the subcommittee meeting, so it was discussed as intended by the mayor. But as it was read, I think the original version that was submitted was read.
So what's important here is that we have the language that was submitted, that was, that was sent up by, by the committee, by the ordinance committee. Is the language that I have in my hand right here, is that the language with the, with the, with the additional section A language? Is that what was passed? And I'm going to need to ask members of the committee for verification, because I'm not part of that committee. What I might need to do is this. What we might need to do is, I'm going to look to table this matter at this point, ask if we can make some copies, hand that out. When there's an opportunity, council will take a look at it. Maybe council or the committee can look at it to verify whether or not this is in fact what was passed. And then we would, at that point, we can have a more, more informed conversation, right? It's what we're doing. So would you mind making a copy? I'm looking for a motion to table for the
Some move.
Motion made, seconded by Counselor Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. The ayes have it. Motion's table. We will get back to that shortly. Under resolutions, document number two sixty-one twenty-two, a resolution zero by twenty thirty-five, securing a sustainable future for the city of Lawrence, put on by Mayor De Pena. It's going before the ordinance committee. The next document is document number two sixty-seven twenty-two. It is a late filed. It is called Resolution in Support of Requiring Payment of Prevailing Wages to All Workers Performing Private Utility Construction, constructing in the city of Lawrence. Looking for a motion to, for a late file. Counselor Payano?
Yeah, it's my motion, so I'd like to motion for, for this to be a late file.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor De Rosario. Discussion.
Not to know who was the sponsor for this.
Sponsor.
Self.
Sponsor is Counselor Payano. That was omitted inside there. They'll be fixed on succeeding resolutions. To adopt this now, we'll need a roll call vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Just to clarify, right?
This motion is to have a late file, to allow it to be put on the agenda, and afterwards, I'll send it to the ordinance committee.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz? Absent. Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor Vice President Estela Reyes, absent. Counselor Rodriguez?
I vote yes.
Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, the motion carries. This Thank you so much.
Counselor President, I'd like to make a motion that we take out item one fourteen dash twenty-two out of Table Matters.
Second.
There's a motion to take document one fourteen twenty-two, appointment of Marlene Farrer to the position of voting member of the Lawrence Planning Board. It's been seconded by Counselor of Voting Member of the Lawrence Planning Board. It's been seconded by Counselor Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it.
Counsel President, a motion that we vote Lawrence Planning Board. I think we, we've heard from, from all parties regarding ethics, regarding the reasons why she would be a good appointment for the position, and I hope all the councilors vote favorably towards this.
So there's already, that, that, very good. There's always been a proceeding motion on this that we did not take off the table, which was for that. I will let the members know that I had talked to Dan McCarthy, Planning Director, today, and he asked if we could keep this item tabled so that the candidate can come before us. Of course, it's the council's prerogative if they want to take it this evening, but that was a request that I received by a phone call from Mr. McCarthy.
Counsel President, so I, I will say that I, I feel like I've had the opportunity to definitely during committee, speak with Ms. Farrer. If other couns, I, I don't need to speak with Ms. Farrer again, but if other councilors are interested in doing that, that's their prerogative. I, I'm ready to vote on this tonight.
Very good. Any other discussion on this matter? Seeing none? There's a question before the council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. No. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President is absent. Counselor Peano?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz is absent. Counselor Levy?
Yes.
President La Plant?
No. Motion passes.
Counsel President, I'd like to take out Item 230-22 out of tabled matters.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Peano to take Document 23022. There was a voice over here who said seconded. Seconded by Counselor Del Rosario. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. We already have a motion before us to adopt Document 23022. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing no further discussion on this matter, I'll ask the clerk to, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. It's passed.
Counsel President?
Counsel, Counselor Infante?
I would like to make a motion to take out of order and on table Item 189-18.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Infante to take Document 189-18 out of table matters, seconded by Counselor Del Rosario. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. What is our prevailing motion on this?
Counsel President, we don't have, well, the, the motion that I made, tried to, was to withdraw this, this item. However, you recommended that we hear from the city attorney, because it's been a while since
So there was a motion to withdraw, but I think it was subsequently tabled. I think I remember, if memory serves correctly. So the current motion is a motion to withdraw that's been tabled. So that's the underlying motion. The city attorney is here. Did you wish to hear from the city attorney, Counselor? Attorney Houghton, welcome.
Good evening, counselors. This was a matter that has been on your table for a while, and it actually should be removed. This, the, the subject matter that's contained here was the subject of two lawsuits, which the city had in the Superior Court, both of which have been resolved. So the, the basic premise of what happened here was, there was a matter before the City Council. The City Council voted. For some reason, it remained on the docket. Some four weeks later, the City Council voted again and seemed to vote the exact opposite of what they had voted the first time. So there was a lawsuit determining which one was correct. So this matter should be just removed from your calendar. The case has been resolved in Superior Court, both cases, and there, there's no need to be discussed in the City Council.
Any other questions or, or discussion? Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes, three Mr. President. So it was a lawsuit that we were, we were aware for a vote that we took, that we took, two vote that we took. I was part of it, and I'm curious, what was the resolution of the court? Please, that's public. Can you state what?
Sure. The court said that the first vote of the City Council was correct. The second vote was incorrect because you, it was not properly, nobody voted on the same night at the same time to rehear it. It was voted some three or four weeks later to rehear it. That's not allowable under the rules of the City Council. So the court agreed that the first vote should stand, and the second vote was ineffective.
And, Mr. President, the first vote was in favor of
It, it was denying the zoning request.
The zoning request. And the second was to approve the zoning request.
Approve the zoning request.
So essentially, what states is the
The zoning has not changed.
The zoning have not changed. So essentially, that parking space or whatever it is, that lot, is still residential?
Still residential. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel President?
Counsel Peano?
Uh, thank you. Can, can you remind us, because I think, I'm just trying to remember the conversations we were having, and I think, you know, one of the issues is that when a zoning law is being presented and when we vote on it, like, there's a limited, a certain time before we could touch that subject again. Is that correct?
It, it is. It's, there's a two-year period.
Two-year period.
Actually, because of the length of time, this was a 2018 matter. If somebody wanted to, they could bring it back before you, because the time limit has clearly passed.
But yeah, for 2018. I thought this was like a year and a half ago, so four years have gone by quick. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Counsel, Counsel President?
Counsel Infante?
At the discretion of our city attorney, I would like to make a motion to withdraw Item 18918.
Motion to withdraw, made by Counsel Infante, seconded by Counsel Rodriguez. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it.
Counsel President?
Withdrawing. Counsel Rodriguez?
I would like to take Item 236. I mean, I would like to, if, if you allow me to, I would like to take 236 and present probably the committee report out of the Ordinance Committee, or anybody from the Ordinance Committee, if they can present it, take it out of order.
The chair, the, the vice chair of the Ordinance Committee is, is Counselor Levy. Counselor, I'm looking for a motion to take out of order, first of all, Document 23622. Is there a motion to take Document 23622 out of order?
That wasn't a motion.
Second.
Motion's been properly made by Counsel Rodriguez, properly seconded by Counselor Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Counsel Levy, will you please give the committee a report on 23622?
Yes. Item 23622 is a resolution in support of the Fair Chair Amendment. It's been made by Counselor Selena Reyes, Vice President Estela Reyes, and Counselor Peano, and Counselor Rodriguez, and myself. And the president is, as a committee report.
As a form of
As a, as a form of motion.
The motion has been made, and it's been properly seconded by Counselor Peano. Discussion? Seeing no discussion? A call of the roll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Roll call vote, please.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice President is absent. Counsel Peano?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz is absent. Counsel Levy?
Yes.
President La Plant?
No. The motion carries. The next document, we're going to go in order. Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chairman Peano, are you prepared to provide?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like if, if the vice chair can give out, can give the report.
Vice Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, we're looking for a committee, the, the report on Document 25122. I do believe it's a committee report.
Hey. Counsel, Counsel President, I would like to make a motion to take five-minute recess.
There is a motion to take a five-minute recess made by Counsel Rodriguez, seconded by Counselor Infante. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it.
I'm looking to get a motion to come out of recess. Is there a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Infante, seconded by Councilor Reyes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're out of recess. Continuing on, document number 250. Is Mr. Ryanello still here? Did we lose him? There he is. Now can we go to the Budget and Finance Committee report? Councilor Rodriguez?
Mr. Chair, the Budget and Finance Committee met and discussed item 25122, which is that the submission of fiscal year 2021 city audit, it was placed on the agenda by Mark Ryanello, our CFO of the City of Lawrence, within the committee. With this, we have discussion slash presentation about the committee. And it is important, it is very important to establish the following. This audit was, is the responsibility of the city council on the section 3.5 of the city charter. This is one of the main point of the check and balance of government in the City of Lawrence. As part of our responsibility, we discussed this at the subcommittee meeting. And have a great opportunity to talk about different things going on in the City of Lawrence in terms of finance. Finance that occur in fiscal year 2021. With that said, Council President, I would like to make a motion to accept this as a committee report. Perhaps we don't have to vote on it, but in case any council have any questions.
There's a motion to accept the committee report for 25122. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Levy. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Counselor, I'd like to go back to document number 23222 that we tabled because we need to get more information. Do we get copies of that, by the way, for each counselor? Do we get copies of that? Actually, we don't even need the, do we get copies of them? I'm not even sure we do need the copies because I think we can explain what happened.
Yeah, proceeding wise, are you going to take any option on this matter?
So I'm looking to take document 23222 off the table matters to have a discussion about what's going on there. Is there a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Infante, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, just to take off the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Did we have an underlying motion clerk on that? Was there a motion to approve already on that? There wasn't. I'm looking for a motion at this point and then we can have a discussion on this. Is there, I thought there was a motion.
I'll make a motion to...
There was a motion by Councilor Infante, seconded by Councilor Selena Reyes. So that's an underlying motion. So that's currently on the table. Now, we had a little brief discussion here. We looked at the documents. I think the clerk was able to do a quick analysis in conjunction with Director Armando. And it appears as though all the language was inside the public hearing notice. But the way that it was paginated, the titles were A, B, and C. There was no B on there. A included both qualifications and position establishment, the appointment. So all the languages in there that came out of the committee, and I just wanted to truth verify that with the clerk. So am I understanding what came out of the committee correctly? Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, go ahead.
Counsel President, now I'm confused.
Okay.
So what came out of the committee, what we were shown?
What came out of the committee was what the clerk read, that there is a minor difference. And I will, can I just see this? Well, it's...
Counsel President?
Yes.
Just, because I reported, I did the committee report on this. I did report, from what I remember, what is in this public hearing is not what came out of the committee. What we have here is what came out of the committee. And I remember specifically reporting because my colleague, Counselor at Large, was not there at that meeting. And I recall you saying, you stated there was a difference between voting and that that person's vote or concern should be heard. And I did report on the wording and how we had a discussion on that at the committee level.
Counselor, would you be so kind, where is the discrepancy on there so we can see that? Where do you see the discrepancy?
This sheet that was just given to us. This is what I recall from the committee level.
So that came out of which committee? It came out of the Personnel Committee? Okay. And then, is there, so help me understand better. Is there a difference between what came out of Personnel and what came out of the Ordinance Committee? Okay. The document that was put for a public hearing, does that reflect what was put before the Ordinance Committee or before the Personnel Committee?
It would be before the ordinance because that was not before the Personnel Committee.
Very good. Alright, so what we have here is what the Ordinance Committee reported out. There has been, there was a change apparently at the Personnel Committee. Am I understanding this better now? There was a change, it was different language out of the Personnel?
Yep.
Committee. Okay.
Yep.
Alright. So I think what would be in order now is that we have that document. So the Ordinance Committee wanted one thing, Personnel Committee wants something else. There was an opportunity at this point, if members of the Personnel Committee wish to amend this document, that would certainly be in order to reflect what they were looking for in the Personnel Committee. As of right now, the underlying document is what the Ordinance Committee, does that make sense? So there's an opportunity to amend, but right now the underlying document is the document from the Ordinance Committee. Is there, go ahead, Counselor Levy?
Yes, Mr. President. So from the Ordinance Committees, we send it to the full council, just waiting for the response that was requested by the Personnel Committee. So when we presented two weeks ago, so we put it on table, waiting for the discrepancy that was presented. So, and to make a decision on which one was going to be taken.
So what we did was, as a city, we presented, certainly we can, whatever this council wishes to do, we will do this evening. So what we have, we did the public hearing properly. We published what the Ordinance Committee did. If counselors here wish to amend that document, it would be in order to amend it. Or at least have a vote to amend it. Does that make sense? So if somebody from the Personnel Committee hypothetically said, I didn't like this language, I look to change it in the committee, what the Ordinance Committee sent is not what I want to see, I'm going to make a motion to amend so it reflects that. That's certainly in order.
I just...
Counselor Infante?
Thank you, President. I think it's fine. I just wanted to clarify that we had different, but I think what we have here is fine.
Okay. Okay. So the language is all there in the public hearing notice. The most important thing at this point is to make sure that we have the language of what was published on the public hearing notice. That's what's the most important thing so we all are on the same page. In my understanding is that... Is this what was in our packet? This looks, this is what was in our packet? I'm going to hand this to Mr. Armando. This is the department that's most directly impacted by this, for one more look over to make sure so that no one's, we're all on the same sheet of paper. Would you please hand that to Mr. Armando to make sure he's aware that we're on the same page? And if there's discrepancy, we got to figure that out. Do we need, we can certainly table it again and continue with the meeting. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we kind of go through the process. And I mean, if the council decide to move forward with this language and the mayor disagree, he have the right to veto it. So we should move this business forward and the mayor can agree or disagree and veto it, present a new language. But in the meantime, I mean, it sounds like most of the counselors are agreeing with what we have in front of us. And we wishing to actually make the call and take a vote.
That's fine. The chair wishes to hear what the administration has to say on this matter, one way or the other. What is your, what do you see there, Mr. Armando?
Thank you, Council President. It looks like, this is definitely not the same document. There's an additional section, and specifically, there is a sentence here that calls for this position to work under the direction of the mayor. I'm not positive that the document that you just handed me is what was published. I thought I saw the word mayor in the publishing.
So I think frankly, I don't, I think there's two different documents. I think that's what came out of the city attorney's office. I think what was published is something different. And I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Could you take a look at this document? This looks like it's some, go ahead. This looks like it's a little different than what the city attorney put forward.
So Counsel President, so I think, so if what was, it sounds like what was in the public hearing is different than what was voted by the Ordinance Committee. So I guess there are two versions. Which is the version that is currently on the table?
Currently, what's on the table should be the current version that was published in the public hearing, which I believe is what the Ordinance Committee sent up.
And...
Counsel, I would like to make a motion.
I'm just waiting for an answer here for a second and then I'll recognize in a second. What's the answer to the question?
Counsel President, it looks like what was published is a combination of both with regards to the direction that this position reports to. My only pleading to you is if there's a way to resolve this, it's a time-sensitive matter in the sense that this position was brought before you for approval as an ordinance because the city had received an AmeriCorps grant in this position would be supervising 12 AmeriCorps recruits starting as early as September. So if there was a way to resolve this by an amendment in whatever direction the council is pleased to amend, I would suggest that the, I would ask that the council amend it to the version that I have, which is... Which, again, it was published, except there's one sentence that would need to be deleted off what was published. That's my only plea to you that we, if at all possible, that we consider making this change tonight. And again, waive the 30 days so that this can move forward.
Counsel President?
Counsel President?
I need to see Counsel Rodriguez first, then I will see Counsel Peano. Counsel Rodriguez?
I would like to make a motion to amend section A to include the following sentence.
Just hold on for one second, Counsel, so I can pull this up again. Hold on. And if I had a hard copy right now, I'd even do a little bit. Oh, section A, Counselor, go ahead.
Section A, yes. Of the current... Yes, the public hearing document. And you're going to read that following, adding... The program director or the title of this position will be...
Stop right there. That's B, I bet on the bottom. You have A on yours?
No, no, no. I'm adding to section A.
For section A?
Yes. The program director or the position title should be located within the Inspection Services Department and should work under the general direction of the mayor. That's the adding. Second?
Just a question, just trying to get an understanding from Counsel Rodriguez. So in section B, it then states that this position shall work under the general direction of the Commission of Inspeccional Services acting either in the Commissioner's official capacity or in the capacity as director of the local Board of Health appointed under MGL 11, section 30. Is Counsel Rodriguez trying to remove that? So you're saying...
And I clarify a little bit on that for you.
Thank you.
Counsel Rodriguez?
As any other position in the City of Lawrence, this position would be any difference. They're going to be working under the mayor's direction.
Thank you. So the question is, does that, so since all positions are under the general direction of the mayor, does it require for us to write it down?
No, but it sounds like we are stuck on a conversation that it might solve the resolution, that might bring the resolution of the problem. I completely agree with you, that doesn't have to be written.
So seeing that there are two general direction statements, are you looking to make section B, say, under the direct direction of the Commissioner of Inspeccional Services?
I'm looking forward to keep B as it is.
So...
And just adding the possibility of just saying that it's going to be under the mayor.
So the position would be both under the general direction of the mayor and the general direction of the Inspeccional Services Department?
That's correct. So essentially, the both are going to be under the mayor.
Okay, Counsel Infante. So just so I'm clear. So currently, in this language, this individual reports to the ISD Director. What I think I understand where this is looking to go is that the preference by the administration is that this be a direct report to the mayor, as opposed to the ISD Director. So while, yes, everybody reports to the mayor, this is a different animal because it's not reporting to the ISD Director directly, or it's a straight shot to the mayor's office. In the amendment by Counsel Rodriguez, is that the intent, that there is a straight shot from this position to the mayor? Or is this person still going to the ISD Director?
So Counsel President?
Counsel Peano?
So I could be mistaken, and I think if I am, then I think Director Armando should state it. From, and the Personnel Committee, what they stated was that the language was general direction, not direct supervision. So I think that there's a difference between direct supervision and general, I'm sorry, hold on, let me just make sure. Between, and general direction. So I think, so if it's direct supervision, then I think that that's just, it's a different conversation than what we're having. If it is direct supervision, then there's several items here that I think we would need to change. I personally, if it's under direct supervision of the mayor, I'm fine with it. I probably, I mean, and I said this at the Personnel Committee, I would want it to be moved under the mayor if that was the case. So, because I think it doesn't, to me, to have someone that's within one department, but the, all the supervising, the supervising individual is in a different department, that doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense to me. And I think in the Personnel Committee, which what was stated was that that was not the case. That the case was that, at least my understanding, was that the case was that this individual is in the general direction, is working within the ISD Department, and like everyone else, the individual would also be under the general direction of the mayor. We had a conversation of if they're under the general direction of the mayor, and everyone's under the general direction of the mayor, including that person working... and everyone's under the general direction of the mayor, including that person working under DPW and nobody in the city has general direction of the mayor written in, in the language, is there a need? We heard there isn't really a need, uh, but it sounds like for whatever reason, we still, the administration still wants to put it on paper. Doesn't make sense to me, but I think if, if that's what we want to do, um, it's neither here nor there, let's put it down there. If that's the case, that for whatever reason, we want general, uh, supervision or whatever it is under the mayor. Now, if what you're saying is you do not want general supervision, you want this person to be directly supervised by the mayor, then I think that needs to be stated so we can make the required amendments and make sure that that fits the bill. I will say that, um, for the past five years, I've been asking for a position like this, uh, to be put forward. I, I'm really excited about this and what this will mean for the city that will have someone that has a public health, um, uh, background and that will help us, guide us and make plans and strategize on how to deal with public health, uh, within the city. We, we're, we're, we're nitpicking on a couple of different things that's important. I, I think we just need a clear understanding from you guys, uh, from you, Director Armando, what it is that you're looking for. Direct supervision under the mayor or general supervision under the mayor? Because everybody's general supervision.
Sure. Uh, I can clear that up. Thank you, Mr. President. So, the, uh, from the administration, the language change was general direction of the mayor. I, again, I don't believe it's the mayor's intent to supervise the day-to-day workings of this position. Just give that general direction, uh, just a, a point of clarification if I may. Uh, this position is in fact public health. Inspection Services is the administrative branch for public health, but as all of you know, uh, and most people in the community know that public health is a, a broad range of activities. And in fact, in the City of Lawrence, we have the Health and Human Services Department as well as the Mayor's Health Task Force that do not fall under Inspection Services. I believe that was the intent of the administration by using that language, uh, general direction.
Through you, uh, Counsel President. Uh, fine. So, who, who does this, who does this person report to?
This person would be, uh, sitting in, um, Inspection Services for, for purposes of administration, but as grants work, uh, we often have cross collaboration between multiple departments. So, they may be reporting to, uh, multiple people depending on the will of the mayor.
Let me rephrase the, the question. Who is this person's supervisor?
I don't know that they would have a direct, uh, supervisor, but they would, um, they could, again, um, report to Inspection Services or, uh, Health and Human Services, um, or the Mayor's Health Task Force. Go ahead.
The simple answer is that the mayor is going to move this person and tell this person depending on how, what the direction, just like the word says, general direction. And this is the reason. The pandemic is not something that was familiar. You have different departments that are, uh, you know, being directed in different directions as opposed to be. Uh, if the mayor, if like, uh, Director Armando said, that you have, let's say, Health and Human Services, you he, even have the Mayor's Health Task Force, that is another department. If you have this individual and the mayor, because if there's an emergency, it's the mayor that calls it. So, we felt, and our recommendation to the mayor and the direction of the mayor was to have this under his general supervision. That's what we're making the request.
Uh, through you, Counsel President. I, I think that there's a, um, that there's a miscommunication, uh, where, uh, when we think general supervision and you're saying general supervision, I think we're both saying two different things. So, I think what I'm hearing perhaps is that what you're looking for is direct supervision under the mayor. Because general supervision is, is diff, is, so, so the question is who is this person's supervisor? What we're hearing is that the mayor is the person's supervisor.
If we put the direct supervision, the mayor as the direct supervision, then automatically this goes into the budget of the mayor. We wanted to keep, to stay there because it has to do with Inspection Services as well. Uh, it has to do with, uh, basically coordination with other departments. So, that's why we wanted to leave it there, just in the position in, in ISD.
Understood.
I mean...
Right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And in the, and if I may, the position is acting as a program director position. Like, for instance, uh, the case of the building director, correct? Building commissioner. The building commissioner for years has been under, for instance, a, under ISD, correct? So, now we have that position reporting directly to the mayor.
That was not a good example because the commissioner is the commissioners. Uh, but anyway, we got it. Uh, so essentially, you want a direct supervision, uh, the mayor's going to tell this person, "Look, this is what you want to do." And it's a direct, uh, mandate order to, as of what that person is going to be doing. And, and let me ask you, is that posi, that position have to be, have to deal with, um, perhaps health crisis?
Correct.
Correct? So, if that position going to be, it have to deal with, uh, public health issues, why, like, because I'm assuming that, you know, the mayor have control of the day-to-day operation. That means that everybody reports to the mayor. If the mayor doesn't want something, doesn't want something, that's it because he have control of the, of the, of the city day-to-day operation. So, it won't make any much difference if, if the person, uh, of the program director for public health is, is, is a direct supervise, uh, supervision of, uh, the Inspection Service, the Inspection Service Commissioner, uh, or the mayor, because the mayor is the one telling the professionals that, 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 you know, what, what is the, what is the main concern of the city. So, having the right supervision or having a general, general supervision of this position, at the end of the day, going to accomplish the same result. I think that we're going around with the same thing.
I think we, we are. And the Council President and rest of the council, we need this to be approved. Uh, it's at the request of the mayor. Uh, we, we're going to leave it up to council to make the decision.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll go back to Counsel Peano and ask him a quick question. Um, what was the, what was the direction, uh, of the Personnel Committee? How you guys move forward this item? And let's move forward that way.
Uh, so, so I think Personnel Committee did not have this, this version of the document. Um, what the Personnel Committee had, instead of it being under the general direction of, uh, uh, the Commission of Inspection Service, it was under the direct, general direction of the mayor. Um, my conversation Personnel was just that there, there still wasn't a conversation as to who the direct supervisor of this position was. Uh, it looks like we are going to be si, like if, we were essentially silent on who the, this person would be supervised by, I think I understand, administration, uh, what kind of deal with this.
It will make sense to have this person to report on a daily basis to the Commissioner of Inspeccional Services, uh, under the, the general supervision of the mayor? I think that's basically how we have done anything that need to deal with health. I mean, perhaps that health and human services, we have, we, we have the same then. And this is what we proposing. That's the change that I was proposing to. Uh, the direction of the general, uh, the, the direction of the Commissioner of Inspeccional Services under the general supervision of, city general, um, supervision of the mayor.
We'll, we can accept that.
I mean, I'm, I move forward that motion.
So, there's a motion already on the floor that's been amended. Is the amendment changing? Because that's what's currently before it.
That's the same amendment that I put there. Am I right?
So, I want to make sure if the admin, is the administration, um, does the administration know what the amendment is? Can we read the amendment again before we take a vote on it this evening? So, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Can you please, one more time, Counsel, your amendment, would you please provide?
Essentially, the, this position is going to be under the general direction of the Commission of Inspeccional Services and, uh, and under the general supervision of the mayor.
And that's going to be under Section A of the position established, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is, are all the councillors clear as to the amended language? We're going to vote on the amendment first and then we're going to vote on the underlying. Uh, is everybody aware of the amend, Counsel Peano?
Yes, so I think so. In A, you're going to say, uh, this, this position will be under the general supervision of the mayor. And B is going to say, the language is already written. So, so you're, you're not changing B, you're only changing A.
We are changing A.
Just adding one few, one sentence. And on the, through you, Mr. President.
We're, we're working through what was published in the public hearing notice. That's where we're working off. That was, that, that's what the, that, that's right. That's what the public knows. That's where we're working off of. Do you want to explain a little bit? Because I think the administration wishes the answer.
I just have one point of information if I could, Counsel President. Just, uh, Counsel Rodriguez, it may be cleaner, um, in your discretion if you just changed B and added the mayor to what was already written. Uh, so it would be the general direction of the mayor and Commissioner?
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that it is.
We can definitely do that.
Could, 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 just for our edification, could you just read that as you think it should be for the councillor?
Sure. I'll read the first sentence. It would be the program direct, this is in Section B, responsibilities. "The program director shall be located within Inspection Services Department and shall work under the general direction of the mayor."
Mm-hmm.
That's added. Uh, "And the Commissioner of Inspection Services acting either," and I won't go on, but just adding the mayor.
Adding the mayor to that. Okay. The general direction of the mayor and the Commissioner of Inspection Services. Okay. Now, that's clear to me. Is that clear to the rest of the council?
I, I have a question. Is there a difference between supervision and direction?
It is.
So, that's a question. Did you wish to answer that question?
I could, uh, give my opinion. Uh, so supervision, I, I don't believe is in here, but in my eyes, supervision would be the day-to-day, what are you doing today? Uh, the way that this position, and again, this is completely new, so I apologize for, we're kind of working through this as you are. We've never had the AmeriCorps program that I know of. This is almost like a department head in some sense that's, um, or a subdivision thereof that's looking over tw, and supervising 12 members. So, they may make strategy and decisions on their own and run their own program under, again, that's why we use the word general direction of the mayor and the Commissioner.
So... Counsel Peano, do you wish to link with the floor? Or do you wish to speak?
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yeah. It should, it should read the file, it should read as following. Uh, and that way we're clear. "The program director should be located within the Inspection Service Department and should be under the general sup, the general supervision of the mayor and the direct supervision of the Inspection Services Director." Is that clear? So, direct at the Inspection Services, general at the mayor's office.
So, there's, we have two, we have two audience, we have three audiences here. The clerk, we need to make sure she's writing this down exactly. Two, we need to fully understand what we're talking about and everybody knows what we're doing. And then third, the administration fully knows we're about to vote on it and they giving us their honest assessment whether they think this is a good idea or not a good idea. So, I want to make sure that all three of us, clerk, do you, do you have that? We're, and if we, we'll do it again if we have to. Do you have the language as Counsel Rodriguez proposed? If not, we can do it slowly. Counsel Rodriguez can do it slowly and then we can put in, but what do you have so far? Read what you have if you have something. And Counsel Rodriguez, and we can all listen and see if that drives.
So, I had for Section A, adding the program director should be located in the Inspection Services Department under the general direction of the Commissioner of Inspection Services and the general direction of the mayor.
Was the first one which, which...
That was the first one.
That was, we are boy.
And the Section B, the program director shall be located in the Inspection Services Department under the general direction of the mayor.
If we have to change, we got to change that up, I think. And I don't think that's...
Let me, let me, let me tell you which one it is.
Counsel President, Counsel Rodriguez, would you mind if I read what I think you have, just the, in Section B? Uh, so Section B, first sentence, responsibilities.
Forget about A. We're not even dealing with A under your, under your scenario.
Yes, under this scenario, uh, just right to be, responsibilities. "The program director shall be located within Inspection Services Department and shall work under the general direction of the mayor," adding the mayor, "and the direct supervision of Commissioner of Inspection Services."
That's correct.
Is that...
So, the key here is the, a general direction of the mayor that is supervised by ISD Commissioner?
That's what I understood it as.
Is that... Direct supervision, ISD, general direction of the mayor. That's what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about. So, let's make sure all of our audience know what we're talking about. First, clerk, do you have that? If you don't, we got to make sure it's straight because this is going to go into the finals. Is the administration okay with that?
Yes.
Counsel President, maybe, maybe you should have...
Maybe you should read it again just to make sure.
Yeah, read it one more time if you don't mind, please. You ready?
Section B, responsibilities. "The program director shall be located within Inspection Services Department and shall work under the general direction of the mayor and the direct supervision of the Commissioner of Inspection Services."
And then what we're going to do, because we're going to take a vote on this, I just want to make sure the clerk has it as it is, as it is said, so that we're all clear. So, when we codify it, it's correct. Let me know when you're ready.
Okay, she has, uh, "Shall be located at Inspection Services Department, shall work under the general direction of the mayor and the general supervision of Inspection Services." Direct?
Under B. Administration's fine. Clerk gets it, I think. We're now going to, so we're going to be voting on the amendment. Anything else there before we take, uh, before anymore? Uh, the, Mr. Peano would like to hear the amendment one more time, please, clerk.
Shall be located at Inspection Services Department, shall work under the general direction of the mayor and the direct supervision of the Commissioner of Inspection Services.
Um, that, that sounds right. There's just, uh, I just want to make sure that we include when, when we, um, the clerk revises this, that we include, there's a, uh, certain areas where the, the word "and" needs to be included, um, that we make sure that we include that just for grammatical purposes.
Do we note that we will, uh, make those changes to make sure that, that the sentence flows with the grammatical, they call them like a ministerial changes, uh, to make it flow? Now, it, further discussions or questions, there's going to be two votes. First vote is on this. Waive vote. All in favor of the amended language, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Now, the underlying motion, this is the whole thing that has been amended. It's already, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. And I believe there was, was part of the motion to waive the 30 days because I think there was a concern about that.
Yes.
That was part of the original motion. Clerk, did you capture that? Okay. Motion is that waived the 30 days, so now it's been adopted. There we go.
Thank you so much for all your time. Appreciate it.
Back to the top of the agenda. We're going to go to the Ordinance and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, um, looking at the first document, which is document number 14821. Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. President, that the Order in Committee, uh, the Order Committee made, uh, Order Number 14821 is top side, Arston Street, Holman O'Gulon Street. That was submitted by Counselor Selena Reyes and was sent there for, uh, to order a public hearing and I submitting as a committee, as a formal, as, uh...
Form of motion. Motion's been made. It is every second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion. Hearing and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document 11222. Madam Vice Chair.
Document 11222 is a 15-minute parking, 83 Warwies Street, from Monday through Friday, from AAN to CP. through Friday, from AAM to CPA, and was submitted by Nereira Madera and was sent there as a public, or to order a public hearing, uh, and I submitting as a formal motion.
The motion has been properly made, is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Del Rosario, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number 15122, Madam Vice Chair.
Item 151, fifty-one twenty-two is a fifteen-minute parking, uh, in front of Tripoli, Lowering Zone, one oh-six Common Street, from Monday through Sunday, from six-thirty to nine P.M. Was submitted by Matt Zapala and Vice President Reyes, and we are sending to the committee for, to order a public hearing, and I reporting as a formal motion.
Motion's been properly made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Madam Chair, document number, Vice Chair, my, document number 15422.
Item 15422. Is a handicap parking, uh, Brookfield, eighty-eight Brookfield Street, was submitted by Counselor Levy and also by Maria Roque, was sent there to the full committee to order a public hearing and I submitting as a formal motion.
Motion's been properly made, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number 15622.
Item 15322 is a two-fifteen-minute parkage, four-seventy-seven Howard Street, this is a restricted for be, uh, new business, and was submitted by Counselor Levy, was sent there to the full committee for public hearing, and I reporting as a formal motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Del Rosario, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number 17022.
Item 17022 is a resolution, a stop sign requested by, at McKinley Avenue and Perry Market Street, was submitted by Counselor Infante and was sent there as a public hearing, and I reporting as a formal motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Infante, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number 21322.
Item 21322 is a resolution, fifteen-minute parking, two oh-six South Union Street, was submitted by President La Plante and was sent there to the full committee for public hearing, and I reporting as a formal motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number 22122.
Item 22122 is a handicap parking, at Sixth Lynch Street, submitted by Jesus Vaspre, and was sent there as a public, uh, to order a public hearing, and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Del Rosario, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number 22222.
Item 2222 is a resolution, Juniper Street, resident parking only, no commercial vehicle parking, was submitted by Counselor Del Rosario and was sent there for public, to order a public hearing, and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Del Rosario, discussion? Counsel Del Rosario.
Should be, uh, resident parking only, uh, and the hours should be showing, uh, from eight P.M. to six A.M., resident parking only.
I believe, counselor, in the, um, in the committee report, it, it does state that, eight A.M. to six P.M., Monday through Sunday?
Correct.
And I'm just looking at the police, uh, can you verify that the police report also, um, meets that?
It's right.
It does meet that, that, those times?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, it's going for a public hearing, we can always change it, right?
Monday to Sunday, yes.
Okay.
Monday to Sunday, seven days a week, from AAM to six P.M.
Yep, I see it. Motion's been properly made and properly seconded, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number 23322.
Item 23322 is a resolution, four-way stop, uh, intersection of Arlington Street and Spru- uh, Spruce Street, was submitted by Counselor Del Rosario and was sent there as a public hea- to order the public hearing, and I'm reporting as a formal motion.
Motion's been made, seconded by Counselor Peano, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number 23620, oh, we already did that one.
We already did that one.
Sorry, 23722.
Item 23722 is a resolution in recognition of Angela Montano Pina, was submitted by Counselor Selena Reyes and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
Uh, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made and properly seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, discussion? Counselor Reyes.
Today, uh, we can table it, bring him back to our next full consumer meeting.
Is there a motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table by Counselor Reyes, seconded by Counselor Rodriguez, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Uh, document number 23822.
Item 23822 is a resolution to adopt a park program, by, submitted by Counselor Selena Reyes and I was sent there as a formal, uh, I was sent there by the full committee, uh, as, and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
Uh, there's a motion to, um, approve and adopt the park program, um, and i- is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Peano, discussion? Uh, I, I have a, a question. Uh, are we looking, it, it's, under be it resolved, it says that Lawrence City Council should adopt an ordinance that establishes and adopt the park program, that's an ordinance, so we don't have ordinance language here, is this your intent to do an ordinance? Or is your, your intent that we have a resolution that's not an ordinance, that, that just, um, suggests, requires, encourages the DPW to do and adopt the park program? I'm not sure what your intent is, counselor.
Uh, the resolution is to, uh, to recognize the effort and the commitment of our residents to decide weekly, uh, go to the park and clean, and we want to recognize the commitment they, they have to maintain our city clean.
Okay, I just, uh, there's one small thing about, about this, counselor, I just, it's, it's under the be it resolved section, if, if, if that is your intent, and, and I think many councils will probably agree with the intent, uh, maybe, uh, we should say something a little different than under the be it resolved, where we were talking about creating an ordinance, and maybe be it resolved that, uh, that the city council encourages the adopt the park program and encourages citizens and businesses to work with the DPW to that extent, to further beautify our, our city, something to that, rather than the ordinance, which is what it says in there. I'm not sure if that's capturing what you're looking for?
Uh, yes, that we're looking for.
Did you want to, uh, amend your ordinance to ref- just under the be it resolved section, so that reflects that? It's, uh, right now it talks about an ordinance, and that, if that is an ordinance, we're sending it back to the ordinance committee for an ordinance. So that's something, a resolution, this is a resolution as opposed to an ordinance, so I just want to make sure.
Counsel President.
We're capturing. I just want to make sure I get from Counselor Reyes what she wants to do here, unless you want to help her.
Okay, thank you, so I just have a cau- a question for Counselor Reyes, um, so I think, um, are you looking to create and adopt, adopt a park program?
Uh, they, they should have, um, absolutely have the application, uh, the existing rules of that, and they consider the application, but, well, I'm looking to, uh, to recognize what they do, because, uh, we don't have any resolution to recognize the hard work they have right now.
So. Uh, correct, so, uh, so you want to recognize what, um, uh, the volunteers are doing, uh, and also, um, what, and this, this goes through the DPW. So you want to recognize what the volunteers are doing and the staff of DPW. So.
Yes.
Um, uh, so how about, uh, I, I present, uh, an amendment, uh, that says that the Lawrence City Council, uh, recognize the, uh, hard work and passion of the, uh, volunteers and, uh, volunteers, uh, staff of DPW, of residents of, of the city of Lawrence, that are engaged and involved in the adopt, in the, in the Lawrence Adopt a Park Program.
I said the amendment.
Okay. So there's a friendly amendment, and, um, yeah. So the clerk here is, is, uh, will need a little bit of help.
Yep, so I will say it one more time, and I'll write this down, um, that the Lawrence City Council, uh, recognizes the hard work, um, and passion of the volunteers, DPW staff, and residents of the city of Lawrence that take part in Lawrence's adopt a park program.
Mister President?
But Counsel Levy, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, so, a person or a family can adopt as many parks they want to do it? Thank you.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Um, essentially, I would like to take the floor to, first, um, thanks, uh, Counselor Reyes for taking the initiative for doing this, uh, and second thing that I would like to say is that, there is so many, so many people that have adopted a park, a corner, uh, or any place in the city of Lawrence and maintain it, uh, not looking for recognition, but now having that, having this resolution will, will tremendously, uh, do that, that part. And I definitely would like to thanks whoever took the initiative, especially Counselor Selena Reyes for doing this, because, uh, we sometimes forget about those people that have done so much work, uh, cleaning up those sections that look beautiful, we passed by, and, uh, and essentially not being recognized. Thank you.
And, yep, anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Seeing, and I just wanted to add one more thing, I used to work with Counselor Roger Toomey, this was a, a big issue for Counselor Toomey, he campaigned on it, he was very forceful, many of the adopt the park signs you see throughout the city was based on Counselor Toomey's experience, who, as well, was an at-large counselor. So you are Counselor Reyes, you are in a very good stead, very good company, you're a, continuing a very good tradition, uh, that was started years ago by Counselor Toomey, so thank you for, as Counselor, my colleague just mentioned, thank you for carrying the torch a little bit further, we appreciate that. Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Uh, next document is document number?
Two forty-three.
Two thirty-eight twenty-two? No?
It's the item two forty-two twenty-two.
Two forty-two, okay.
So this is the, oh, huh. Item two forty-two twenty-two is the All Go License Brother jury, uh, submitted by Francisco Marcelino and was sent there to the full council, and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
The motion has been made, is there a second? Motion's been made and properly seconded by Counselor, uh, Selena Reyes, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Counsel President?
Uh, Counselor Peano?
Uh, Counsel President, um, and you, I might need your adv- how properly, uh, do this, I'd like to take out item, uh, two sixty-five dash twenty-two, um, out of order for the purposes of, um, I don't know, uh, discharging it out of committee? I mean, it's not in a committee yet, but for the purpose of discussion, maybe.
So I think what, I think what the, uh, what's looking to be done here is to take document two sixty-five as an emergency for this evening, to take it off, and then to, uh, to suspend, eventually suspend the rule, so we don't send it to the committee, and then go ahead and then to adopt it, I believe that's the intent of the administration. So the very first step is to, is to take document and start off with taking, is there a motion to take document two sixty-five twenty-two out of order? Motion's been made by Counselor Peano, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it, I'm just looking at a count, the next one is gonna be to declare it an emergency, we need six votes, we have six counselors right now at the, before us. Um, is there a motion to take document number two sixty-five, um, uh, two sixty-five as an emergency, and please state that, what the emergency is, uh, so go right ahead, is there a motion for that?
Uh, so the.
Where do I need to make a motion first?
Uh, Counsel President, I, I would like to make a motion, um, uh, and, uh, I would like to invite, uh, Mr. Spanner to, uh, explain the, uh, the emergency component of this.
Um, sssss, so what would be proper is to make the motion to, uh, to emergency, and I do believe it's for, um, I don't have my book in front of me, um, it's for the convenience of the public, I do believe that's the, the rationale for under the, the emergency clause, so if you want to use that, and then Mr. Spanner can certainly go into more detail as to what the emergency is, that would be in order. So is there emergency to declare it under the convenience for the public? Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, there is.
Motion made, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Anna Levy, discussion? Mr. Spanner, welcome, please discuss the emergency.
Counsel President, um, I, this item came before us, um, and I would invite, uh, Corina and also Tracy to come forward, just in case if there's other questions. Um, the reason for this emergency item is because, um, we are, um, there are certain repairs that need to be, that are associated with the move, uh, from, uh, of Merrimack Valley workforce to the, to the, to, to the other location, which would be, I think, uh, One Union Street. Uh, in addition, um, the mayor is, uh, wanted to request the emergency, because once the workforce investment bo- board moves, uh, their offices, then we need to make preparations, uh, for, uh, the Adult Learning Center to move in the, uh, at two fifty-five Essex Street. Uh, the repairs, according to the information that I, that we received, is gonna take approximately six weeks, um, at the, uh, at One, uh, Union Street, and we also are soon approaching, um, the, the next, um, uh, academic year for the Adult Learning Center. Uh, by taking it to commesh, into committee, and then coming back, um, it's gonna take a longer process, and there will be, um, a delay. This has never happened before, that, um, the workforce, uh, board had to come before you, but we have, uh, looked at the cour- uh, the ordinances, uh, the Department of Finance, uh, has, uh, indicated to us that we, um, the proper form of doing business, following business, better business practices, is to bring it before you, because the contract is gonna be for five years.
Thank you, is that it, Mr. Spanner?
Yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Del Rosario, Counselor?
To you, Mister President, and you said that this is not, well, it, this is how it's supposed to be, how was it done in? How was it done in prior years? How, I mean, the administration, what would they do if they didn't bring it down in case of emergency? What was the procedure done before?
It would be signed by the mayor, and then come before the city council, before this body. And it was brought to our attention, and that's why we're bringing it. We want to do, the mayor wants to do the right thing. And that could be confirmed also by, by the whip. You can come forward, Tracy.
Yes, we have not become before, you before for a lease, and this is what we're here for now. We did procure for the services, and now we have an award that the chief procurement officer had initiated. So we're just looking to get the lease approved so we can relocate our offices and then have the Adult Learning Center come where we're located now.
Could you please state your name and position, title?
Hi, Tracy Miskowski. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at the Mass Higher Mary Mac Valley Workforce Board.
Corina Ruiz, Deputy Director at the Mass Higher Mary Mac Valley Workforce Board.
And the, the contract is more for, more than three years. It's a five-year lease.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes, it is important to recognize through you, Mr. President, that every time that we have a contract that is a three or more years, you have to, you have to come to in front of the city council. My question would be, previously, those contracts that we have there, it was, they were more than three years, or they were three years or below?
Hi. So we are currently at a city location, at two fifty-five Essex Street, so the city has a license agreement. Before that, we spent about fifteen to twenty years at Heritage Place on Union Street. We do have a board of directors at the, we have a regional funding, and the board of directors would recommend and approve any procurements that are facilitated, and like Octavian had mentioned, that the mayor would sign off on the lease with the city attorneys and the city partners. So this is the first time we've been asked, this is a new lease that we have because we haven't occupied in a city building. So now this is something new that we have.
Right, no problem. Thank you.
Any other questions on the vote that we're about to take with six votes? Because then we're going to have two more votes after this, so I believe. So this will be a roll call vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice President is absent. Counselor Peano?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz is absent. Counselor Levy?
Yes.
President of plan.
Yes. The motion to create, to adopt, to declare it an emergency has now been passed. Our next vote is to suspend our rule, our Rule Twelve, that requires that any new item be sent over to the committee. So I'm looking to, I'm looking to suspend Rule Number Twelve. Motion's been made by Counselor Peano, seconded by Counselor Infante. Any discussion? Hearing that, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz is absent. Counselor Peano?
Counselor Peano?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President is absent. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
President of plan.
Yes. The motion to suspend the rules carries. The final vote this evening is for adoption of this, which just needs five votes at this point. Is there a motion to adopt this item?
Some move.
Seconded by Counselor Infante, seconded by Counselor Levy. Discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. So just for the record, I wanted to make sure that we understand that we received a two-sheet, two-sheet contract early today around three P.M. And, and one of the, and one of the sheet states that we have two, two possible landlords. And one of them is, one of them is Aussie Properties, and the other one is One Union Street Real T L O C. And just for the record, Mr. President, the lower bidder is five hundred fifty, fifty-one thousand nine hundred twenty, nine hundred sixty-two point five for five years term, for five years lease. So within the, within the lease terms and condition, which we don't have, so even though we probably need this today for, because of an emergency, and this, and the Adult Learning Center thing so far, we would like to get the terms and conditions of the lease.
Through you, Council President.
That's, that's one thing. If we have it, perfect. I can, I can go ahead and read. But I'm wondering to know, is this five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars going to include all the expenditures, all the expenses in regard to the rent? Or this is part of it, and all their money is going to be for insurance, commercial insurance, or what else?
Hi. So the lease is all inclusive of utilities, everything like that?
So it's all utilities?
Yes.
Heater?
Yes.
Water?
Yes.
Electricity?
Yes.
And everything that could represent another expenditure?
Yes. Cleaning, trash removal, recycling.
Snow removal, trash removal. It's all inclusive?
Yes.
Okay. No more questions. Thank you.
Counselor Peano.
No, I was just going to say, Council President, a three copies of those docu-
Looks like we do have copies.
Yeah, we would like to apologize, Council President, because this is the first time that the, that the whip, basically, that staff have been dealing with this, and we requested the copies. We were under the impression that this information was submitted to the clerk, but they brought the copies with them tonight. Our apologies for, for that mishap. And for your information, Council President and counselors, our city attorney, Mr. Tim Hooton, has reviewed the contract and has helped the whip in drafting up this, this lease agreement.
Mr. President?
Counselor Rodriguez.
Through you, I would like to spend the opportunity to our city attorney to walk us through the contract that we have in front of us that we are about to vote.
I'd be more than happy to. And just for the record, you can blame this all on me, is the fact that it came before me. And much like you said, I read the ordinance that said that it had to come before the city council. They had not done that previously, and so I, we insisted that they come before just to make sure that we had complied with the ordinance. We, my job here is not to, when I review these, is not to go into what the money is, what anything costs. My job is to make sure that the paragraphs that pertain to the city, that benefit the city, are contained in here. So I, I put those in there. I looked at the scopes of services. This is a standard contract to triple net lease. So as far as answering, you know, individual items about the lease, I couldn't do that to you. I could tell you a whole, it's a, it's a five-year lease. There is a chance for renewal. There is a, there's the standard terms in there, and that the landlord is allowed access upon a certain amount of notice. The, there is a determination if there's any defects in the property, the proper procedure, if they're major, how the landlord fixes it, if they're minor, if the, if the tenant fixes. There is where the payments are made, how the payments are made. Your standard compliance is in here. So if you have any particular question, like I said, as far as money and months, that's not my job. That's the, that gets negotiated outside of me. My job is to make sure, A, that the, the document is enforceable, and B, that it protects the city.
And through you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I haven't read this, this document here, but something that I always ask when it comes to contract is about, if there is anything there that automatically, or perhaps easy, an easy way to renew the contract, that could be a potential issue to the city eventually, or just the standard language.
Still, this is, also should be noted that this is federally funded, that this is not actually, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. But the, again, if there is an extension on there, my advice, and should they come to me, is that anything that extends it more than three years would require it to come back before the city council. I think that the ordinance is clear.
No, no more questions. I mean, thank you so much. Thank you for explaining.
Council President, we also wanted to make sure, because there were several questions on behalf of the staff at the Mary Mac Valley Workforce, and I think for future reference, it is good for them to also be aware that that's the reason why we insisted to come before you because we followed the recommendation of, of the city attorney in terms of being in compliance with, with the city ordinance.
Senator Del Rosario, then Counselor Infante.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we take a vote, I just wanted, for the first time ever, say thank you to the administration to bring this to us. It would be a low blow, or being blindsided, if the mayor just go and sign this contract without us knowing. I'm assuming the previous administration is doing. So I wanted, for the first time ever, say thank you to the administration to get us, get us, us involved in this. I'm glad that finally, my colleague Rodriguez got able to ask questions, which he probably never asked before, and we asking questions that we probably wouldn't have an opportunity with the previous administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Infante?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. I also want to echo what my colleague just said. Thank you for bringing this to us. I do want to note, I'm looking at the memo that was sent to us today. It was sent to us at five oh two P.M. I'm looking at the signatures of when city officials signed this. This was signed on June twenty-eighth, June twenty-ninth, and then the mayor signed it today. I, the only thing I ask that if we, and I know the mayor's office is really busy, but this is over a month. So please be diligent to give us these documents in a timely manner, because at five oh two, I was not looking at my email.
No, yes. And Counselor, point well taken. Unfortunate, they were, we were going back and forth with the whip staff. We had to find out ourselves concerning the ordinance. We were dealing with the city attorney. The city attorney was also on vacation. I tried to communicate this information with most of you. You were on vacation, and Maria De La Cruz, I was unable to reach to her. And unfortunately, since this is the first time that, and this is not an excuse, it's just to explain the process, that the, the Mary Mac Valley workforce staff was under the impression that they had to come with the copies and not deliver it to the silly clerk's office. So our apologies for that.
Thank you.
Council President. Counselor Peano?
Council President, so I just have a question regarding, regarding the contract. If, if there, I'd like to ask the city attorney. Sorry to, how do you get up again?
My exercise for the evening.
Getting those steps in. So if there is, let's say, an issue with like the roof, or like structural issue, is that something that the landlord's?
Landlord is responsible for, yes.
Okay. All right.
But little things like if, if we break a light bulb, we break something on the inside, we are responsible. The landlord's not responsible for that type.
As far as like janitorial services, that's us?
They, they provide a dumpster, they provide, they don't provide, I don't believe they provide a janitor, do they? Oh, there is. There is a janitor included, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I, I want to thank you, though, for, you know, essentially ensuring, like catching this. I think it's, it's important, you know, you know, all hands on neck, that folks are able to oversee things and make sure that we are following through with the right laws and procedures. And I think this creates a certain level of transparency to ensure that the council and the public knows exactly what's going on. One of the things I worry about, I mean, this is a five-year lease. In five years, will there still be people around that will remember that needs to be, this needs to be done? So I'm wondering if this is, if there is a structural issue? Like is, is, what can the city do to ensure that when we're doing this type of procurement, that we're, we're following the correct rules? Because it sounds like, you know, at some, at some, you know, unless a, a previous administration just didn't want to follow the rules, which is something else completely, like there, there should have been some department that should have, before he even gets to the city attorney, that says, oh, this is the right process.
Yeah. Again, what happens, and I'm not making excuses for anybody, I see, I think sometimes what happens when federal money's involved, and it's not city tax money, people assume, oh, we don't have to go through certain of the rules, but I'm not excusing that. In my office, what's happening right now, and it has happened in the past, is that, for instance, because of this right now, there is now a, there is a folder with a reminder in there, and it's also a folder on all leases. So the next time a lease or something comes before me, we have a folder. It's, there's an opinion in there. I just open it up. I mean, I, I do this on a daily basis. Is it something that I haven't seen before? I'll talk to Sue in my office. She'll go to the folder, we'll pick it up, no matter what the subject matter. There has been a prior writing by a prior city attorney telling us their interpretation of what's happened, so. And I think that had this, I, this probably never went before the city attorney before because nobody ever thought it had to go before the city council, so. But if it comes before the city attorney, again, there is a folder marked for leases and for review and the proper procedure.
I guess I wonder, I'm sure, like, it sounds like you've already written a memo on this. Like, is it possible to ensure that all the stakeholders and all the players within the city that are involved in this type of work, receive that email, and then perhaps the administration can ensure that, you know, that there's some type of like signed document, like I've read this. Because like, you know, my, my fear is that five years later, maybe it's not for this, but it could be for somebody else that, like, you know, things get lost. But I think if, if everyone is aware, then there's, there's less likely a chance that something like this will happen.
No problem. I'll, I'll work with the administration, find out the appropriate parties to send it to, anybody involved in leasing, and I'll get it done.
Thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate if the administration can just ensure, when that's done, that, that those players, whether it's an email, whatever it is, that there, that you guys have some acknowledgement that people like read the memo and are aware that moving forward, that this is the right process.
Yeah, and Counselor, we, that's one of the reasons why all contracts, all department heads, before they submit a contract to, to the mayor for signature, they have to have a discussion to explain to the mayor, because of budgetary reason. And, and that's also a process to, it's like check and balances, that the, the staff, the department head would sit down with the mayor, explain, justify, even though it's budgeted, but needs to justify the use of the funds. And once it's approved, that they can, that they go through the city attorney. If there's any other questions, then once it gets to the mayor's table, we, we also review it again. So it didn't happen before, and that's why there were certain questions that were raised. And we try to do it the best way we can. And remember, the mayor's, the mayor's vision and also policy is to work based on transparency and honesty. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And just to be clear, this agreement, is it for five years?
Correct. For five years.
So, so again, as I said, thanks to the city attorney's office. I want to say thank you to you as well, and the administration's office for, for flagging this and, and going through the right procedure. So I thank you all for that work.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes. One, one last question. What, how big is this space?
Six hu, six thousand six hundred and fifty square feet.
Go ahead. Say it again.
Yeah, six thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet. And fifteen fifty a square foot. For five years with an option of a five-year renewal, six months prior to the expiration of the first five years.
All right, thank you.
Chair? Any questions, comments? Number?
So the discrepancy is due to the proposal. The bidder had bid for more space than actual. When we actually got, when we worked with the architect to get the drawings, there was actually a little bit less square footage, so that's the square footage that we're paying for, the actual square footage we're going to be occupying.
So the council should know that in the memo that we received on June 28th, the actual figure is going to be less than what we see on that memo. The actual figure should be five hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and you can find that number under Schedule B in the contract that we just received this evening. So we're actually, it's less money than what we saw originally.
Correct.
Just for, as a reminder, schedule, timing, move dates, when are these things happening?
So right now, we were given the green light, just to go ahead and start to procure for moving services. We do have invitations for bidder right now. The preliminary plan right now to move is August 31st. If this gets approved, we can keep it that timeline. We still have things to do to transfer data lines, so everything's kind of predicated on today's meeting. The timeline.
No, I appreciate that. And just so I understand, because of the timing and the quickness of everything, I mean, if we don't act on this this evening, what, I mean, let's talk about what that worst-case scenario is, what is that impact? If we don't take this action tonight, which is truly why we're calling it an emergency, pay for, when I talked to my constituents, I said, how did you pass a five-year lease for half a million dollars on that night? And now you're going to tell me what I'm going to tell them? Because if we didn't do it that night, here's what would have happened. So tell me, fill in the blanks, what would have happened if we don't pass it tonight?
So I'm going to say that the adult learning center would not be able to occupy our space. We would need to get an extension for our license agreement with the city to remain where we are. We would just continue to house our services in our location, or to sub out some other space for services, especially for our youth customers.
The repairs, the necessary repairs that needs to be done and be completed within six weeks, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, so most of the build-out would have to be done, this was all in the procurement that we had done by August 26th, so we can have the data lines moved properly for a move-in date of September 1st. So again, nothing has been scheduled to be done, we just have procurements out for services, we can always cancel the procurement if needed, and schedule a later date once we know what's going to happen with the space and where our location is.
And my understanding, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we don't do this, there's a real cost disincentive for not passing it this evening, that there's additional costs, perhaps in the thousands of dollars that the taxpayers would have to pay if we don't, if we don't advance this in an early setting. And if I'm not right about that, let me know, I'm kind of leading you there, because I think that's the understanding, but you tell me, is that accurate? And do you have any ideas of how much money this would cost the taxpayers of the City of Lawrence if we don't pass this tonight, extra beyond what we would have done for all these incidentals you just described?
So as far as the city, it's rolled up in our regional funding, we're state and federally-funded organization, so the funding, I don't know what our license agreement would be with the city if we had to remain intact, and then what the consequence would be for the landlord, for the build-out. Again, there's nothing tying him to continue on with any build-out. So we're just trying to see if we can just get things passed for the August 31st date, and if not, things will just have to remain with the mayor and see how things will move forward.
Yeah. The reality is that without this being signed, this landlord has no obligation to us whatsoever. Could lease this property tomorrow to someone else. There's a considerable amount of build-out that's necessary here. Again, the, I hate to say it this way, but our hat has been tipped, people now know what we're willing to pay, so the next landlord would double it. So that you'd be looking for new space, you'd be looking at a much more premium, what would cost, you know, the cost just wouldn't be there. So without this being in place, because obviously the landlord's no fool, the landlord's not going to start a build-out for this type of building if the next tenant wants something different, so none of the repairs are going to begin if it's not signed, none of the, none of the work's going to begin, everything would be put back, so the cost could be, you could just guess, because, again, like I say, once somebody knows what you're willing to pay, the next landlord could not, could be almost, you know, one and a half times.
Thank you, that does answer my question, I do appreciate that. I'm going to take a roll call vote on this, because it is a five-year contract, I don't think that we need to, but I think we should be on the record. So if there's no further discussion on this matter, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Vice President is absent. Counselor Piano?
Yes.
Counselor de la Cruz is absent. Counselor Levy?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, the motion carries. We're going to continue on now with the ordinance committee documents, I do believe we're at number 243, 22? 246?
246. Document 246 is a five-year long work, Manchester Street Park. This is going to be on August 14, 22, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That was submitted by Eddie Rosa, Groundwork Lawrence, and it was sent to the full council, and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
Motion made by the vice chair, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, discussion. Counselor, there is no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it. Counselor, our records show that we didn't do, according to the clerk, 243, can we just do that, just to make sure? 243, 22?
243, 22 is a second-hand dealing license, this is a renewed license. Is the price applied, and it was submitted by Jose Pimentel, was sent to the full council, and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
Motion's been made. Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, discussion. Seana, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Document number 250, 22?
Item 250, 22 is the Fiesta Show Carnival at the Camp on a Car Park, Common Park, and it's going to be on August 5th and August 2, August 7th. And was submitted by Fernando Aguila. Was sent to the full council, and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
A motion is made, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Infante, discussion. So we're having a carnival. They're going to deliver the stuff by this weekend, the 7th? That's coming up this weekend?
Yep. It's August 5th and August 2, August 7th.
And I think the mayor has already expressed that this is the last year that they're looking to do carnivals on the common, and I think that, at least that's what was said to me. I, so we'll keep it at that, I guess. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Document 255, 22?
Item 255, 22. Is a disclosure by the municipal employee, Adely Gonzalez. Was sent to the full council, and I'm submitting as a formal motion.
Motion made by the vice chair, seconded by Counselor Piano, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Under withdrawals, document 123, 21?
Item 123, 21?
Is there a motion to withdraw, document 123, 21?
Second.
Motion made by the Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Piano, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it. Is there a document, is there a motion to withdraw, document number 41, 22? Is there a motion? Motion made by Counselor Levy, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Piano, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it. Is there a motion to withdraw, document number 167, 22? Counselor made by Counselor Piano, seconded by Counselor Levy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it. Is there a motion to withdraw, document 189, 22?
Second.
Counselor, made by Counselor Pavel Piano, and came out of nowhere, the second by Counselor Infante. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document number 241, 22, is there a motion to withdraw? Motion made, and seconded by Counselor Levy. All in favor say aye. The ayes have it. Is there a motion? At this point, I'd like to give the gavel over to the most senior member of the council, Mr. Rodriguez, for document number 190, 22. Counselor, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and allow me the opportunity to, motion to reconsider. So moved?
Second.
There's a motion on the table, probably second, discussion. To reconsider. Well, there is a motion, who was the on the line motion? All right, there is a motion on the table, probably second, all in favor to reconsider, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, there is, now we have item 190, 22, what is the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt document 190, 22, second.
All right, there is a motion on the table to adopt item 190, 22, which is an ordinance adopting and enacting a new code for the City of Lawrence. It was put together by Counselor LaPlante. Can I hear a second? All right, it's probably second, discussion. There's no discussion, I call the roll call. Madam Claire, can you please call the roll call, please?
Counselor Infante? I actually have a question.
All right, I open the floor for a question in item 190, 22. Counselor Infante?
Thank you, Chair. Counselor President LaPlante, can you, can you just refresh me on this real quick? Thank you.
Sure, so, and I'll get some help from the city attorney, who I asked to be here this evening to help guide this discussion if needed. So this is a, we are required by law, I believe, to go ahead and to codify our book of ordinances, to say that these are true, these are what we passed, this is what we have agreed to, and this book needs to be certified, essentially, for us to work off of it. And maybe I'm inartfully saying that. City attorney, am I missing any, I mean, that's just the 30,000-foot level on there. Is there a detail, through you, Mr. Chair, is there any detail that I'm missing on that?
No, Counselor Infante probably is so used to computers, she's not used to these old-fashioned-looking books, but what happens normally is that...
I actually like the old-fashioned books more than the computers, FYI.
What happens is that when you pass a new ordinance, what they basically do is, they take out a piece of paper, put in the new paper, and it really becomes, after a while, it's sometimes it's just handwritten notes in here. So we're quiet every so often, just to, it's just cleaning it up. Nothing has changed, it's just they're typing it up into nice, nice neat letters, they put them all organized, they have them all in there, and so as of this date, every ordinance is in here, all nice and neat, it's also on the computer in that form, so we're just adopting that this is, in fact, the ordinances. But it's kind of an old process, I think it will probably go by the wayside in the next few years, because everything will be changed, and it will be computers, but for right now, it's the book, and they're just asking you to adopt the fact that the book is complete and all the new ordinances, each, I mean, each meeting you pass new ordinances, there'll be another change made to it till the next time we do the book.
Thank you.
Mr. President, do you have the floor? All right, that is important to recognize a few points here. Now that we are adopting this book, we also have the same book reflected online.
Correct.
Which is under the, under the...
Minus code.
Unicode?
Yes.
Anybody that would like to see this book can do so online on the Munich, on the Munich page, on the city council.
Open to the public, the public can just click on your page and go to code, and they will find anything that they want on there. It's so much more available now than it used to be. It used to be that people would have to come, literally come in, take a look at the book or something of that nature, now, from the comforts of their home, they can view any ordinance of the code, or any of the rules of the city council, or anything they would like.
And I would like to probably express a comment to the city council president. When was the last time, probably you know, based on the conversation with the clerk, that we updated the Unicode ordinance book?
I believe it's been 20 years.
It's supposed to be done every five, so.
So this is why we're doing this, right?
Yeah, so we're up to date now.
All right, any other questions, councilors? I call the roll call, Madam Claire, can you call the roll call, please?
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice President is absent. Counselor Piano?
Yes.
Counselor de la Cruz is absent. Counselor Levy?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes. Are there any other table matters that the committee wishes, the council wishes to bring up this evening? Seana, we'll go to new, yes, sir?
I'd like to take out item 389-18. 389-18, department heads quarterly reports.
There's a motion to take document number 389. 389, 19? Am I getting the right number?
389-18.
18, sorry. Motion's been made by Counselor Piano, seconded by Counselor Levy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right.
Counselor President, I'd like to make, send communications to all department heads that they produce quarterly report. The next one that would be due would be September. I will, so one thing to note is that all department heads were producing quarterly reports until COVID hit, and then when COVID hit, folks started to not produce them. Understandably, there was a lot going on. I think that this was a very good, you know, Counselor Rodriguez and I made a motion, ordinance change years ago, where we pushed for these quarterly reports. I think they created a really great level of transparency, I think we should get back to that. So I'd like to make a motion, we send correspondence to the department heads, so that way they produce and send to the council the next quarterly report, which would be September.
Second with discussion.
Motion's been made to send correspondence to the department heads to resume committee reports up until September, seconded by Counselor...
I'm sorry, not up till, until September, but like, the next one is due in September. Yes.
Mr. President?
Issuing one in September, it's been properly seconded by Counselor Rodriguez. Discussion by Counselor Rodriguez, then Counselor Levy.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Piano, for bringing this up. I took the initiative two, three weeks, two to three weeks ago, based on the recommendation from another counsel, Counselor Levy called me up, and we discussed and see the need of actually having those reports coming up. We actually sent correspondence with our, bringing up to the council through our secretary, and I'm wondering to see if there was any, any department responding back with a report. Nobody say anything. All right, thank you, thank you, our secretary, for doing that.
Further discussion, Counselor Piano?
Thank, so, I was not aware of that. So it sounds like if three weeks ago, there was communication that was sent from our offices asking for the quarterly report for, for, what would be for June, so that means that they would have all of July to come up with a June report, then perhaps the correspondent should just be that the council, the city council is requesting the June quarterly report. So I'd like to amend my initial motion, asking the department heads to produce, and I think it'd be important to... heads to, uh, produce, um, and I think it'd be important to, to set a date, um, you know, what, what's a good date?
End of the month.
We are in summertime, as is reminded.
Yeah, so hold on, we are in August, end of the month, so, uh, that, that's fine. So that means that, um, uh, by the end of the month to produce the, uh, quarterly report for, uh, for June.
So the motion has been, uh, has been substituted with the new motion, which is to, uh, to require that the department heads provide a quarterly report by August 31st, end of this month. Seconded? Seconded by Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Levy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Payano for, uh, taking the item 389, 18. So, but today also, I just asked Teresa, again, to send, uh, a memo to everybody, uh, just to remind about those reports.
That's what we're there for.
Yes. But I, I want to let you know that I already, uh, asked Teresa to send that, uh, a new reminder, because, uh, about three weeks ago, we sent that, that's, uh, the first reminder, and nobody having answered on that. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Payano to table, seconded by Counselor Rodriguez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Anything else?
Counsel President, I'd like to take out item 1121.
Uh, there's a motion to take document 1121 off a table matters. Is there a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Counselor Infante.
Uh, Counsel President, I'd like to-
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Uh, Counsel President.
The ayes have it. Counsel Payano?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to make a motion to withdraw item 11-21.
Move, second.
Motion made by Counselor, uh, Payano, seconded by Counselor Rodriguez. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Anything else?
Uh, Counsel President, uh, I'd like to take an, uh, take out item 50-22.
Uh, there's a motion to take one, uh, I'm sorry, 5022, 5022 has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes, this, um, uh, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Counselor?
Counsel President, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to withdraw item 50-22.
Motion made by Counselor Payano, seconded by Counselor Del Rosario. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll go off to new business. Uh, document 256, 22, Handicap Parking, 39 East Havel Street, Ordinance Committee. Document 257, 22, Order to Expend Grant Funds in Mary Corps, uh, that's going to the Budget and Finance Committee. 258, 22, Disposition of Real Property, Housing Committee. Did you hear that?
Yes, I heard that.
All right. Somebody's going to get to get busy. 259, 22, Removal of Kelvin Moreno Garcia, um, from the Lawrence Planning Board. Mr. Hooten?
Yes, uh, Tim Hooten, Acting City Attorney on behalf of the, the mayor. Uh, the mayor would like this matter to be, um, tabled, uh, and for 60, uh, 60 days. I, I, here is my, here is my concern, and you can direct me as you, uh, great knowledge of the board is, I, I would not want to, um, have it printed on your agenda every week that you have a meeting. Um, I just think that it would be, you know, kind of, what would I say, insulting to the person involved? Um, so we're looking to not act on it, but we're, we're, we're kind of bringing it back up in 60 days, maybe, maybe not, so I'm just asking what you would prefer, I, if I could just remove it from the agenda?
We have two choices. We have a choice of either withdrawing it right now and just getting rid of it, which is fine, you're the, uh, if you're speaking on behalf of the administration-
Mayor, yes.
Um, then we can certainly just withdraw it, or we can send it to a committee where it sits. So those are our choices.
I, I would rather withdraw.
Motion to withdraw?
Motion made by Counselor, uh, Payano, seconded by Counselor Infante. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The matter is now withdrawn.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your-
Uh, document 260, 22, Religious Outdoor Service at O'Connell Park, uh, Ordinance Committee. Document 262, 22, Environmental and Drainage Safety Issue at Water Street Lower Section. Counselor Rodriguez, this is something that's prime for committee on the whole, there really is no spot for that to go. Your item 220, 262, 22.
Yes.
You want a public safety issue on that? Okay, public safety it is. 263, 22, Worship and Preach the Word of God at the Campano in Common, Ordinance Committee. 264, 22, A Car Show, Osgood Street. Uh, that is going to the Ordinance Committee. That's on August 28th. Uh, we already did, 265, 22 has been completed. 266, 22, Body and Brain Yoga, Tai Chi, Campano in Common, various dates in September, is going to the Ordinance Committee. That is it. Counselors, um, let's start off with, uh, with, with personnel.
Counselor Payano, personnel.
And me, and, and just, we, we need to get cranking on the clerks, because the election's coming up.
Yep, I, I am aware.
[inaudible]
Missing two members, and I think that, um, I, I, I think I, I have to have a conversation with those two members, uh, in order to see, um, what time that they'll be able to go in. Um, I, I don't want necessarily, uh, to depend on Counsel President, uh, because it, it also means that if Counsel Infante or I are, for whatever reason, unavailable, then, then there is no, uh, there is no quorum. So, um, so I, I will tentatively say, uh, Monday, um, we're looking for, uh, I'm trying to do a morning meeting. I will ask you, Counsel President, yes. Uh, Counsel President, are you able to do morning meetings, or no?
I can do morning meetings. I'll take vacation time to do so, because that's how important this is, we got to get this clerk's position and other positions.
Thank you, Counsel President. So I will say, uh, Monday, 9:00 a.m., um, personnel will meet. And I hope that 9:00 a.m. meeting will allow, um, everyone to attend.
Very unconventional. Uh, this is the first in my 18 years to see a Monday morning meeting. This is, uh, we're breaking, breaking new ground, so good, good for us. Uh, Budget and Finance, well, I've got you on the hook. Is there anything before Budget and Finance?
I don't, I don't think so.
I think you're right. I don't, we have one item?
[inaudible]